Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 6th Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could go ahead and call the meeting to order and call the roll, please. Everyone is present, if everyone could please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Most gracious heavenly father, please be with all of us tonight, protect us and guide us and help us to do thy will. Amen.
Please face right, right please.
Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time entertain motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that because of the people that are here and the way the budget, not the budget, the way the thing is laid out, if you could take under item six D and move it up under item two.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote, please.
What are we doing?
We're moving the presentations of the proclamations up to the beginning of the agenda with the other presentations.
Okay, six D, okay.
Six D to be six three.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I was a little bit behind there.
Motion passes, agenda's been approved with the suggested changes. If we could now move on to public addresses to the board. Madam Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
I have two people signed up to speak. The first one, Kia Glosson. And was that, he just here for the proclamation? Wonderful, okay terrific. The second person signed up is Rod Debs.
Same thing.
Come forward here.
I'll go ahead and read your statement if that's all right, Mr. Chair. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A speaker representing a group of individuals in attendance will be allowed five minutes. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
I'm Rod Debs. I live at 204 Cheryl Circle in Greenville. And I guess the point I'd like to make is that the people in the county jail are human beings. And many of them have had experiences harsher than I have ever had. And I believe many have not had the resources that I've enjoyed in my seventy years. So I'm wanting to speak in support of Sheriff Dance's request for staffing of a social worker with trauma-informed education and qualifications, skills. Because I think that they can help reduce recidivism by helping people see the resources that they have within themselves to, if they regulate themselves, bring themselves back into regulation with the assistance of the social worker, a trauma-informed worker. They see the resources within themselves and also access the resources that are in the community. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can now move on to item number six on the agenda, the presentations.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, if we could go down forward, we will start with the departmental safety awards, then go to employee of the month, and then read the proclamations in Okay, thank you all. If I could say a brief few words about departmental safety awards, and then if your department won an award, I'll call you forward to come and receive that award. When you receive it, if you'll stay in the front, we'll get a photograph at the end. So the North Carolina Department of Labor and Safety Awards Program started in nineteen forty-six, and it's operated within the Education Training and Technical Assistance Bureau of the Occupational Safety and Health Division. The program is designed to stimulate interest in accident prevention and provide safety in the workplace by providing an award to employers who maintain safe workplaces. Pitt County received six silver awards and two gold awards at the Department of Labor Safety Banquet on April twenty-eighth that was held here in Greenville. So to qualify for an award, an employer must have no fatalities, must have an incidence rate of at least fifty percent below the average for its industry, and then the gold and silver are determined by a calculation of the number of days out of work in any given year due to accident or injury. So we have several representatives from the various departments here with us tonight. When I call your name, please come forward for your award. The first one, and I'm actually going to set these down. Yeah, thank you. Or I'll give them to you to present, how's that? The first one, Pitt County Detention Center. Do we have Chief K. Part or Captain Poston present? Please come forward. The Pitt County Detention Center resulted, it has a fourth consecutive silver year award. You can receive that from the chairman. Stay right up along here. The first year silver award goes to Pitt Area Transit System. Cam Coburn would please come forward. Our next silver award is a first-year safety certificate that goes to Pitt County Emergency Management, Randy Gentry. We have a second consecutive year silver award to Pitt County Solid Waste, John Demery. We have a first-year gold award to Pitt County Public Health as a first-year gold. Dr. Silvernell, I've shared with this earlier today, and we will get this to him. And then the last one we have is a first, a fourth consecutive year gold award for Pitt County General Government, and of Chris Barnes, our risk manager, would accept this on behalf of the county. And I, we weren't finished. I'm so sorry. There is a third consecutive silver year award for Pitt County Department of Social Services, Dr. Augustine Fraser, if you'll come forward. And last but not least, a second consecutive year gold award goes to Pitt County Animal Services, Chad Singleton, if you'll come forward. All right, that concludes your safety awards for this year. I can't tell you how much I appreciate everyone taking our employee's safety. Our employees are our greatest asset, and keeping them safe in a healthful environment all year long is something that we're really proud of. Let's kind of come in a little bit for a picture.
We could get two rows. Yep.
Winner's up front. Do you want me to slide over since I have all these cords showing? All right.
Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Great. Thank you all so much. Next thing is one of my favorite things to do during the course of the year, and this is our Employee of the Month, a new program that we started this year to recognize outstanding employees within our workforce. And this was revealed to our workforce on May thirteenth of this year, so please help me congratulate our Employee of the Month, Lieutenant Frida Godley Hines. Lieutenant, if you'll come forward. They are welcome to come forward as well if they would like to. And then I'm just going to read a few words about Lieutenant Godley Hines.
This is my dear lieutenant, dear, retired.
Retired. Thank you so much for being here. Okay. Frida Godley Hines was nominated and selected by the Employee of the Month Committee for her leadership and selfless attitude. Her actions are what proves who she truly is. She has worked with a short staff and has been a great leader. She volunteers first to cover a shift and puts her staff first when scheduling time off. A positive supervisor who makes coming to work much easier, and she cares about us, said her nominator. Lieutenant Frida Godley Hines has over twenty years of service with Pitt County Government. She's a former school resource officer for Pitt County Schools and is now a supervisor in the Community Impact Unit. As supervisor of the Community Impact Unit, she's responsible for the school resource officers, dare officers, crime prevention officers, community and volunteer program coordinators, Deputy Curtis, and the therapy dog canine drifter. And when asked to give a quote, Lieutenant Frida Godley Hines said, "I believe that when it comes to teamwork, the team is only as strong as the weakest link. I pride myself in treating people how God says we should. I'm forever grateful for the opportunities I've been given." And for that, we celebrate you. And I'd ask for you a certificate and a one hundred dollar check. Thank you so much. Yeah, and thank you for being here.
Can you get together?
I'm getting closer. Oops, you want me to go this way because of all my cords? There you go.
Three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you so much. All right, and then because we have esteemed folks in our audience this evening, we're going to move the proclamations forward. If I could please have come forward. The first is a proclamation recognizing Resilient and Thriving Communities Week. So if Jennifer Matthews, Robert Kemp, Desha Lane, Angela Lamson, Keith Letchworth, Miranda Gavin, Lindsey Cobb, Taylor Young, and Kia Glosson would come forward along the front. Within his authority, the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners has issued a proclamation in support of Resilient and Thriving Communities Week, the week of June sixth to twelfth. And while you're coming up, I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas resilient and thriving communities are vital to our county's future health and success and prosperity to ensure a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and stages of life. And whereas the science is clear that resilience is built and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting safe, secure, nurturing environments for all. And whereas adverse childhood and life experiences, adverse community environments, and adverse climate events impact overall quality of life and well-being of an entire community. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to promote positive experiences, secure relationships, and supportive environments to buffer stress and adversity. And whereas investing in policies, programs, and strategies that address adversity and strengthen community resilience is essential to the health of our county. And whereas Pitt County encourages all agencies, schools, faith-based organizations, healthcare systems, elected leaders, businesses, and individuals to collaborate to strengthen our communities. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June sixth through June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Resilient and Thriving Communities Week in Pitt County, North Carolina, and commends its observance to all citizens. Adopted this the sixth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two, signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick and attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board." We will present it to Jennifer Matthews.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, so you hear it right on the head. Is there anything briefly you wanted to say?
Oh, I should have told you.
That's fine. Thank you all. If you'll just go around and introduce yourselves, I think that would be terrific.
We have a few that didn't get their names on the list because they join us.
Please do join, absolutely. Come forward if you're associated.
Yep, yeah, Rod and Jeanette.
And this group comprises a group called BRICE.
And that's Building Resilience and Courage to Excel, and it's the Trauma and Resilience Collaborative for Pitt County.
Okay, we thank you all so much for taking your time to be here, and if you'll go through and either introduce yourselves, or if you will.
Angela Lamson.
Bert Kemp.
Jennifer Matthews.
Keith Letchworth, and I represent NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Illness in Pitt County.
Desha Lane.
Kia Glosson.
Kim Anderson.
Miranda Gavin.
Matt Debs.
Lindsey Cobb.
Aaron Roberts.
Davis Curry.
I love this.
Augustine Fraser.
A round of applause for this terrific group. And then we have one last proclamation. This evening, if Randy Gentry would come forward, I can present this. Thank you, sir. All right, the second proclamation signed by the Chairman this week is a proclamation recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, Rising to the Challenge. And this was actually back in May fifteenth to the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, and we're announcing it today. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service to the citizens of Pitt County, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas two thousand and twenty-two EMS Week theme, Rising to the Challenge, recognized the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating that week as Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners did hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, as Emergency Medical Services Week throughout the county, and urged all folks to recognize and support its many activities and efforts of those providers as was done then. Adopted and signed by Mike Fitzpatrick, Chairman, attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board. If you want to give that. And that concludes our presentations.
That took care of it.
They were all happy people.
Y'all get me something.
And then you have my final presentation.
My name is Mike Rogers, I'm a Greenville boy. I say boy, an older man now, but I'm kind of new to Pitt County. I've only been here forty-four years. I just want to give you a little insight of our department. We are, bear with me, this is my first.
And if you can stop right there for a quick second, just so the board's fully aware, what we've started is in our department head meetings, we've started a departmental spotlight. So one department head at each department head meeting provides just a few minutes about their department, so other departments get a sense of what everyone else is doing. I thought that our first presentation was by Buildings and Grounds, and Mike Rogers did a terrific job giving his couple-minute presentation that I asked him to come forward to the board. And as these presentations come forward, I think it's beneficial for the board to hear. So I'm sorry to introduce you right at the outset, but this is Mike Rogers, our Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds for his department spotlight.
And we also have an assistant superintendent, his name is Edward Bunning, and I've got a great administrative assistant, April Robuck. And we have three lead mechanics, three maintenance mechanics, and four maintenance assistants. We were established in seventeen fifty-nine, the county seat was established in seventeen...
Talk right into that microphone.
I'm sorry.
Just there you go.
That better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We were established in seventeen fifty-nine, the county was established in seventeen sixty, and by that time I figured they had a building and a craftsman to take care of it, and that's us. We maintain almost three-quarters of a million square feet of building space. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty years of combined maintenance experience, and our twenty-one-twenty-two budget was just a little under two-point-five million dollars.
Your PowerPoint, I don't think is showing up. Is it showing up on y'all's screen?
No.
I can see it now.
We good now?
Yeah.
Okay. We provide all kinds of building maintenance services, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, cabinetry, masonry, carpet, tile, painting, plaster, framing, sheet rock, concrete. We do moving services, groundwork, pressure washing. We help with the annual building maintenance, and we're on the part of the five-year CIP, Capital Improvement Projects. Building and Grounds is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we respond to any and all emergencies that arise. Prime example, three weeks ago, we had the roof blow off part of the auditorium at the Ag Building. Within, I say three hours, our crew was up there, we pushed the metal back down, fastened it down, and we're back in business, never missed a step. I've got a great crew, and they're, they're pretty good. We work all inclement weather, severe storms, hurricanes, snowstorms, when everybody's out watching the news with the snow leaving the area, we're out there getting it out of the way so you guys can come back to work. I don't know if that's a good thing or not. And we also work under the direct supervision of Brian Burnett, Financial Services, and we work closely with Tim Corley in Engineering as well. I think I've already covered that. But anyway, in summary of that, if you came in tonight and you pulled into a marked parking space, and you walked up the sidewalk noticing that the grass was cut and occasional flower, and get into your areas and turning on your equipment, and you felt your workplace and the atmosphere was pleasant and comfortable, clean, clean and painted walls, sometime during the day you get the call of nature and you have to go and answer that call, and you're able to do that, and wash your hands with warm water, and you've been touched by Building and Grounds in one way or another. I always like to say, let's move on, I keep getting ahead of my PowerPoint, I'm not used to this, but this is some, this is my maintenance assistant, we do locksmithing work, we do painting and plastering, and that's our shop. I don't know if y'all can see that at the bottom. We get a lot of compliments on our shop, we have people come in, and they say it's the cleanest shop they've been into, but like I say, we do, we do pride ourselves in what we do, and I've got a great crew. And one thing I like to say, Janice, she gets tickled by this, but when you're at your house and you have a problem, and you get in trouble, you call nine-one-one. Well, when nine-one-one needs help, they call Building and Grounds. So anybody have any questions? I remember, Tom, when you were a young man.
Yeah.
You've been here a while, and Mr. McGlaughlin as well.
That was a lot of years ago.
And I know Mr. McGlaughlin.
No, no, I'm glad you're only supposed to speak at the beginning of that age.
Great presentation, Mike, thank you.
At least you could still recognize me anyway. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for coming forward. And as the board knows, not all of our departments are used to making presentations like this, but we have such a strong team of department heads and directors that I want this board to see and appreciate each of them the way I do every day. So thank you to Buildings and Grounds and your entire staff. Okay.
If we can now move on to items for report, the Pitt County Uptown Facility Utilization Study, Mr. Corley and Mr. Farkas.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to be in front of you tonight. I have with us John Farkas, representing JKF Architecture. As you know, we're about to have a lot of moving parts of, of the county as far as moving people around to different places. We, you will see, we've got a contract for you tonight for Register of Deeds, which will occupy, open up some space within the courthouse there where Register of Deeds is now, as well as the sheriff's building, which we continue to move forward with. So we wanted to, as part of that, part of that work, we wanted to get ahead of the curve in a sense and look at the best way to utilize the space that is uptown, really the courthouse along with the other additional buildings that the county owns. As you know, some of those buildings have county employees in them, some have employees of the state, and others that we basically prepare space for them, whether it's, whether we have to, or whether it's just good faith. So a lot of different agencies, you may see some things tonight that John presents that you didn't know, that maybe this was space that we give folks, or some buildings downtown that maybe you didn't know that we own. So I think it'll be a little eye-opening in that regard. And so this, this study is really to, to see how best, we met with each of the different agencies, all the folks that represent all those different buildings and all the agencies in the courthouse, interviewed them, find out what their staffing needs were, find out what the future staffing needs were, find out where things were heading. And John has taken all that and prepared this study based on all the data and input that we received from all those folks. So John, I'll let you take it away, and then I'll, I'll close after you're finished.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to come and talk with you tonight. Again, I'm John Farkas, Principal of JKF Architecture. Let me see if I can get this to you. There we go. So the, the report, and I'm assuming everyone has it to some degree, and we've made a couple little tweaks to it, but of course, you know, we, the impetus of this was because of, one, the new sheriff's office building, which will free up a lot of buildings downtown, and then also the purchase of one hundred East First Street, which now we're going to move Register of Deeds into, so that frees up space in the courthouse. So good planning says you need to sort of prepare for the backflow of all the other things that are going to happen once you build a brand-new building, and you free up all this space. So we went through, we had a whole series of meetings with the people in the courthouse, the various support buildings, everything from the public defenders to the magistrate's office to Register of Deeds, all, everyone, all the judges went through, and we've sort of organized this with a start of the fact that the first ones out of the courthouse would be the Register of Deeds, and also a good bit of the sheriff, once they relocate. But immediately, since you're, you're going to talk about renovating First Street building, what clears up immediately is the Register of Deeds area, which you see here in this slide, where we're putting down and saying what you should use that space for down in the basement is interdepartmental storage. It's really not a very good space, you have office space... It's really not a very good space, you have office space down there right now, and there's a lot of records, but the real use of that space should be focused on storage, and storage for everybody in the courthouse, not just the magistrate's office or just one group. It is the capability of having multiple small lockable spaces, secure spaces for storing, and try not to put people down there in offices, because it's just not user-friendly. I think the troopers that have worked down there for quite some time now should be given a round of applause for working down there for such a long time. The left side of the space is the non-occupiable space, that's the old jail cells, old jail cells in the building. And then when you move up a level where the Register of Deeds currently is, we're recommending that that actually be the new Small Claims Court. And also across the hall in those other two spaces, the probation office. So right now, both of those functions are in the building on Washington Street, and that is really substandard for the kind of functions that go on there with the magistrate and the probation office. The building doesn't have good security, it's also just architecturally, just subpar, it's not handicap accessible on either side of it. So what we want you to do is bring Small Claims Court and probation into this area and renovate it. We also have noted, and the other reason is, they would also take advantage of the security of the courthouse. So people now would still come in the main entrance on Evans Street and have to go through security. Right now, in the magistrate's office, anyone can walk into the magistrate's office from the front door or even the back door. It's that small. So we do that, we estimate the renovation cost there is about one-point-three-five million to basically upgrade that for its new function. The renovation in the upper portion, I call that renovation number one, that's to actually construct a new district courtroom and office suite. They are at a capacity point in terms of their district courts appearances and judges, and they need an additional courtroom. And what we have targeted here is that office area immediately to the right of the two courtrooms, district courtrooms, and believe that we can renovate that into a new courtroom that would be very similar to, say, District Court Number Four on your map there. In addition, we'd have to do some reconfiguration of the corridors and things like that, but the way the building is designed, this is also pretty flexible construction. It's not like it's built out of brick and block and we have to tear hard stuff down. We'll be able to move these partitions around and do that, and we think that the estimated cost for that renovation as a total project, that includes construction, fees, demolition, the whole nine yards, is about one-point-six million. Renovation number three of this floor is the area, again, that is currently occupied by the Sheriff's Department, again, once they move out, and we're calling it flexible meeting space, and it actually is on the backside of the district court and gives the district court expansion space for traffic violations and small claims, and things that they have to do, that they don't need a full courtroom for, but they can use it as an overflow, overflow waiting area, they can use it as flexible meeting space when they have out-of-town judges come in and they need a space. Also, you notice in the lower left, we're tagging that area, which is currently the sheriff's entry area. We're tagging that for the new Superior Court offices. Superior Court is on the next level up, but they actually need additional offices so that we can make room for the district attorney's expansion. Going up one level, there's really nothing happening there, that's the Superior Court, we're not recommending any changes to that floor. And then we go up another level, the clerk of the court is the predominant tenant of that area, we don't see anything happening on that floor. And then when you get to the top floor of the courthouse, the district attorney's office is the one that is running out of space and actually needs to expand, and so we're expanding them to the west end of where the current Superior Court offices are. So we're moving them downstairs, and we're just expanding this, and there's a minimal cost to do this, it's basically occupy the space. It's not that the whole district attorney's office couldn't use an upgrade at this point, given they've been there about twenty-five years now, so the finishes are kind of wearing out, and they've got a lot of files and things that could all be reconsolidated, but we look at this as really sort of a very low-impact cost space to move. The other building that is the big benefactor here is the sheriff's office on First Street and Evans Street. So currently, they occupy the entire building. What we're recommending here is that once the sheriff moves out, we move over juvenile justice from the tax assessor's building, move them out of there, and we also bring the guardian ad litem, who's currently up in the Economic Development Building, or just above the tax collector's office, move them over there, and then also, there was a need for a family resource center, so all three of those functions could work together. And again, you know, barring any upgrades that you may want to do, aesthetically, there's really no cost to move in here. It's just moving people from one place to another. This is the building on, this is currently the magistrate's office with the probation office next to it. The north and south end of that building are on two different levels, you can't go, you can, but you have to step, a pretty big step, to get from one to the other, so they function separately. And that's why our recommendation here is to either demolish the building or sell the property, because it's a small piece of property, it's not very big, somebody, you know, in the private sector may enjoy that building, it's not a very good building, needs a lot of work, love and care to it, and I wouldn't want to see the county wasting their resources on this particular building at this time. There it goes. This is the old BB&amp;T building on the corner of Green and Third Street. They felt like they were actually in pretty good shape, but what we did notice was storage was at a minimum, also, there's no access to the second floor via an elevator, so it's really not handicap accessible. And so what we were suggesting here was a two-story addition to the west side of it, and that would include an elevator, additional storage space, some expansion space for them over time, and also a suggestion that this, as a building, could actually be expanded even further, not just for the public defenders, but also any other department that you might want to put over there, because there's a, as you can see in the aerial, all of that is your property. It goes all the way to Second Street, I believe that is, and it's bounded by three, the only thing you don't own is the upper-left corner. So this is actually a tremendous resource, when you think about, if you wanted to consolidate other things, as I'll talk about a little bit later, you'll see this is sort of an option B for you guys. And we think to do this addition is around a three-million-dollar project. This is the probation and parole office on two oh six Washington Street, it's right next to the magistrate's building. We're not recommending any changes to that, they seem, from a space standpoint, they seem to be in pretty good shape, as well as their building on two hundred Green Street that they're using. So both of those facilities, no recommended changes. This is the tax assessor's office, and it's currently occupied by the tax assessor on the right half of the building, and juvenile justice on the left side. They do not mix, it's like oil and water, so we want to move juvenile justice out of there to the sheriff's building adjacent to this. But even when I ran the numbers for the tax assessor's office, I felt that they, even if they take over the rest of the space, and I think they can do it on an interim basis, just kind of expand over, but long-term, there's not the long-term growth in there, and I think the tax assessor's office is going to be one of your biggest growth departments in terms of the tax base growing and the number of assessments and the revenue that they bring in, I believe that you're going to need an expansion at some point. So we're suggesting actually an expansion to the west side of the building, which is currently the parking lot. There could still be room to actually drive through, but we would eliminate the parking spaces there. We could bring in the tax collector as well, so you could do one-stop shopping in one building for everything to do taxes. And again, this would be an addition, I think that was about a four- or five-thousand-square-foot addition, plus to actually upgrade the entire building. It's been, obviously, as old as the building is, it's been repurposed and changed, and new walls added, the air conditioning system is probably dysfunctional, the electrical's probably run out of room. What we're recommending is a full overhaul plus an addition, and asking you to budget for about six-point-nine million dollars to do that. The tax collector's office, which is across the parking lot from that, currently has on the first floor, the tax collector's office, not extremely efficient, but it works for what they do, plus they have the drive-in capability, and then Economic Development and Guardian Ad Litem is up on the second floor. And what we're recommending for this building is, if we can get everybody else out of there, that you really sort of move this building to be the hub of economic development, whether it's the other economic development entities come in with you, but you have this great resource right here. If we could renovate the upstairs, you'd actually have a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of downtown Greenville and the river and everything from up there, we just have to get the building to actually do that. It's cut up pretty heavily upstairs, so that could be meeting rooms, it could be places where you woo new industry to come in here. And again, we don't think it's going to cost a lot to do that, we're in the one-point-seven million-dollar range to sort of upgrade that building, including possibly putting in a new elevator, because there's no elevator in the building right now. So the first few slides that I went over kind of represent sort of what you can do right now, how you can reallocate, how you might have to spend some money to do some of it, but how some of it could be easily moved around. We were kind of looking at what's the long view look like. This is, towards the bottom is where the courthouse is, outlined in red, and what we're looking at is that this would be an ideal site, bounded by First Street, Evans, and Second Street, that this could be the next block of full county office building. You could actually build a facility on this building, multi-stories, even with a parking garage underneath it, so that you could actually bring everybody over downtown. And I'm looking at, you know, I've done a few space studies for you guys over the years, I know I looked at county managers at one point, social services, engineering, all these here, and I think you can actually bring them all over downtown and put them here in a multi-story, probably five-to-seven-story building that actually overlooks the green space on the quad. And then you could phase that in where you start to take out of service these one- or two-story buildings that sort of surround it, the one up on the corner of First Street, as an example. So you could build this multi-story building, bring a whole bunch of people over here, start to vacate these facilities, and move yourselves into a more contemporary space, more energy-efficient, better working environment for everybody, and then you can start to do Phase Two, which would be to then pick up the corners and get rid of some of the old buildings. So now you build enough flex space, you can move people around, you have future growth built into it. And then, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the old BB&amp;T property, which is, again, I'm showing the same slide on the lower left, this is actually your flex space. This is actually where, if we fill this up, then you could go here, because this space, this particular lot and that whole bunch of lots you have there, offers your best growth potential for either parking, maybe it's parking in the short term, or maybe it's more buildings that you could build there to pull over any remaining county offices that have not been brought into the big fold there. So, you know, we think there's a lot of potential, to the right is where your Register of Deeds office is going to be, and that's, you know, as far as, that's a pretty big facility for them, but they have lots of storage, lots of growth potential over there, so they should be set for a good long time. And then I think just developing this, whether or not we can do something where the area that fronts towards First Street could have some amenities to it that would bring people down, whether you guys want to be landlords of private sector in this particular case, where you have space that the private sector can come in and actually use that towards First Street, it would be a great addition to developing that. And I think the multi-story approach is actually the right thing for urban downtown. I kind of think the idea of one-story buildings in a downtown environment is just really not good for downtown. So in this, you could be downtown, consolidate a lot of the properties, where probation is right now, we can bring them into the fold over time. So I think that's kind of where we landed on the report, and I'd welcome any questions.
I'd like to know where everybody's going to park that's going to be working in all these spaces, plus the people that are coming down there to be serviced or whatever. I see that it looks like a lot of parking space is going to be eaten up.
Well, again, that's why the lot that we looked at where your tax assessor is, and you have all that land, it actually sets itself up because it's on a pretty good slope between First and Second Street, it actually sets itself up perfectly for an underground parking lot.
But isn't that expensive?
It is, but it, as a cost of the building versus building a standalone, it would be part of the building itself, like we see...
Yeah, but that would not service all the other buildings around it.
Well, no, it would serve the county office building, and then you'd have the other piece of property that I mentioned as well, over here where BB&amp;T is, there's a lot of surface area there that's not even used right now, so you could actually have a parking lot, a surface parking lot for now, and then as the county grows, that's when you start to densify downtown by putting in, say, a parking garage.
And if we do this, how far will people have to walk?
That is, what, about a two-and-a-half, three-block walk, maybe?
Say again?
It's about a two-and-a-half, three-block walk from Green Street.
Is that a full city block and eighth of a mile? Or what?
No.
I can't hear you.
I don't think so, I think it's only, each one's, I don't know, maybe three-hundred feet, I mean, a block. Be part of your health initiative for your employees, actually.
I'm thinking about rain and snow.
Well, actually, you know what, the equivalent would probably be being parked out here in the farthest extremities of a parking lot and having to walk to this building, it's probably equivalent to that, actually.
Okay.
So just to close, I know there was a lot of information thrown at you, we don't expect that all those projects are obviously going to be done at one time. That's part of the planning process, is just like James does, a lot of his planning, it's kind of preparing for, you know, the future and trying to see where our capital improvement plan needs to go as far as our space needs and how we need to plan for those from a financial standpoint. And a lot of these things have to happen in order, you know, as we move forward with vacating one building, we have to find, that place has to be renovated for that space to be used, and so on and so on. So really, tonight, the only action items we're looking for is, we feel, is the space that's going to be vacated within the courthouse by Register of Deeds. And that's because that space will soon be vacated, probably within the next, I'd say, three months, we'll have that, if it's blessed tonight, the contractor will have that work done in about three months, and so the Register of Deeds will be able to move out into that building. And so tonight, we're really just looking for approval to move forward with the first two items that were presented, which was the courtroom, the additional district courtroom at the courthouse, as well as the Small Claims magistrate court modification to the upstairs of the Register of Deeds.
I had a question, I thought, thank you for the presentation, John. When you're talking about that large building with first floor looking over the river and turning that out to private renters, what sort of, that's like, could be, I guess, anything, but you're thinking more of amenities for the river as opposed to office building, I don't know.
Well, again, I think in terms of urban planning, you kind of try to generate spaces that people are going to come to and visit, obviously eateries and things like that on the river that would benefit from all the activities down by the amphitheater coming out and being able to use that. The fact that you'd have all those employees, for the county employees, in that five-or-seven-story building, needing a place to go eat lunch or whatever, I mean, I think that's opportunities versus them having to get in their car and go somewhere else during the lunch hour. I think it offers a real opportunity to make downtown, you know, more lively, I mean, you're going to bring everybody that's here, perhaps, or most people, and bring them downtown.
It does, it's very interesting, thank you.
There's very little that has been downtown in a long time.
There's very little that has been downtown in a long time as far as improving and attracting people to come and set up an office or, you know, a restaurant or whatever.
And that's it. Office space is even hard to find.
Absolutely. So I think it would.
We've been looking for a long time downtown, but can't find anything because it's just all locked up. So, yeah, I think it would be, you could have a variety of space, whether it's, you know, there's opportunities to attract retail or food establishments or clothing, you know, clotheries. And you've got a lot of people who need shirts and ties, so why not have a nice place where they can go do it? And you guys could be the driver of that since, you know, downtown is sort of just slow and steady. There's not a big boom and explosion on it. It's just kind of one thing at a time. Nothing's really lighting up fast. So we kind of think it would be a great chance for you guys to be in the driver's seat.
Yes, I like, I have two questions. When you're talking about government offices and building, are you talking about all, including planning and the Board of Elections? What are you talking about?
Yes. Yes, to all of that, actually. I mean, we're, we're thinking, trying to get as much of it over there as possible on the central site. And then that's why I brought up the other site where the BB and T building is, as this other opportunity that if you can't get it all in the five or seven-story building, that you still have this other opportunity where the BB and T building is currently, where the public defender's office is, to get the rest of it here. So that in theory, if you guys wanted to, you could be out of here. But you could have Board of Elections down there, you could have it near the tax center. So maybe your first floor of this building was very, you know, which are the services that need public interaction the most? Like the tax collector, the tax assessor, the...
Board of Elections.
The Board of Elections.
You can't find it.
Yep. So, but again, it offers a sort of one-stop shopping opportunity for the county as well, which I think would be beneficial. And again, you'd still have all this expansion capability out even across the river at the industrial park as well. And maybe that's more healthcare, or maybe we, you know, maybe.
I think, I think the planning building has something like the veteran services and stuff like that over there.
They would all stay together. They would come back and be part of general government.
That would be good.
Yeah. See, on this slide here, we were kind of listing the big hitters in this particular building, such as, oop, you had the county manager's office, the attorney, finance, human resource, board of elections, planning, even emergency operations center, bringing them down there so that you'd have them all. And you could effectively wean yourself off this complex.
From the start of this project, what is the time estimation of completion?
I'm sorry.
The first phase of it.
I couldn't hear you.
From the start of this construction, what is the timeframe in terms of completion?
Of this one or the smaller ones?
The smaller ones.
The courthouse, the courthouse work?
Right.
John, I don't know if you designed, I'll let you speak to design.
Yeah, I think the courthouse work where we, if we could add the courtroom and we could renovate for the magistrate and the probation office. I think you're looking at, since they're small renovation projects, anywhere from three to five months for design and then probably up to six months or so for renovation. So you could effectively have them, you know, in roughly a year's time, ready to use. So you'd have a new courtroom and you'd have the magistrate ready to go into their space. And we can, you know, we're waiting for, obviously, for the registered deeds to move out. But while that happens, we could probably get the design done during that period of time so that we're actually shovel-ready to go to construction and bidding, bidding and construction, I should say.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a comment, and then I'd like to make a motion. Comment, I like the idea of county taking an active role at being visionary. And so I like that idea. And also hopefully along that front, working better with private industry to be more vibrant in all sectors of our, of our holdings. I think this plan certainly gets us thinking about that, and I like the direction. So on that note, I'd like to make a motion to approve the report as presented and also move forward with the two small action items, the vacated registered deeds space and the new district courtroom. And I don't know if there was anything from the manager on, anything from the district attorney's office? Was there anything necessary on that front as we, as we build that out?
The two positions. So, yes, so if I could back up and say two things. One, if your motion, as previously discussed by the board, would include that the funding for those two projects be from your ARPA funding? So this money was set aside in the bucket for ARPA already, so we just continue on that path. And then also within ARPA funding previously discussed by the board, and I suppose it's not directly related to the construction, but it does relate to the courthouse and a couple commissioners had asked me about funding for temporary, two temporary positions for the district attorney's office to handle the backlog of cases as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We had kind of backed up on that a little bit because there was some additional funding from the state. But the need continues to be there. And Ferris Dixon and his team continue to request that there be two time-limited positions paid for through ARPA funds by the county. And since that's related to the courthouse, if you're approving the two building projects this evening, if you added that in as a third, then we could pursue that further.
That would be my motion.
That's second that.
It's been moved improperly second.
And while you're voting, Mr. Manager, could I say something briefly about the project? Mr. Chairman? I could just say briefly about the project to thank John Farkas and his team for bringing this forward. And although that five-to-seven-story building was presented as a long-range plan, as your manager, I would like to see that as a shorter-range plan rather than such a long-range plan. I think from a cost perspective, we could pursue or explore the possibilities of public-private partnerships to do it. I don't think this is a project that the county ought to fully fund all on its own. But to the extent there are private developers who would like to partner with the county, I'd be, if the board's so blessed, I would be glad to have those conversations, pursue that further, and then bring you back some further ideas to maybe take that concept from the longer-range plan to a sooner-range plan if the board doesn't have any objection.
No objection. We don't need a motion, just.
I'd like to know more about the public-private partnership portion of that.
So would I, and that's what this would do. This would investigate and bring back information for the board to consider. Didn't mean to interrupt your vote. Did you need to call it? Was it?
It was unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Could now move on to the short session legislative update. Madam Manager.
I think something is wrong with my clicker. It doesn't, the, the vote doesn't.
I think it counted yours, Mary. It showed on my screen.
Yeah, but I never pushed the button.
Oh, you're the ghost. They didn't read your mind.
And it's still voted. Because aren't you clear after each vote? Doesn't it clear after each vote? It's still, it's still voting.
And we can check that on the next vote. If you see something on the screen that is not your vote, Mary, please let us know and we'll get that straight for the record. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wanted to provide a short session legislative update for you. The members of the North Carolina General Assembly delegation for Pitt County have been very busy at work over the last few weeks. And we've been monitoring that. And I just wanted the board to be aware of some of the bills that were introduced over the last two weeks that have an impact on Pitt County. And I have copies of each of those bills for anybody who's interested in having them to read about them more. But wanted to let you know, let me grab right here, I'm sorry. Senate Bill 873 provides, was introduced by Senator Don Davis, provides $6 million for a gymnasium at Alice Keane Park and $600,000 for a sheriff's office ballistic lab. And that bill was introduced. All of these bills that I'm going to tell you have been introduced, they have not yet been acted upon, but are pending in the General Assembly now. Senate Bill 876 provides $751,000 to repair Lake Glenwood, contingent upon the county owning the land around it for public use. House Bill 1048 provides partial funds for a passenger rail study if the county and the city will pay the remainder. And that has to do with passenger rail service from Greenville to Charlotte. And House Bill 1025 provides $4.5 million for a new fire department for the town of Grimesland. So I wanted you to be aware of those pending bills. Also introduced, but a little less directly related, Senate Bill 877 provides funds to the Lost Sheep Foundation. You may have heard that when we talked about it several meetings ago, a nonprofit. House Bills 101 and 806 provide funds for the Pitt Community College reentry program, both capital and operational needs. And you may recall, the reentry program was one that we also set aside funds in the American Rescue Plan dollars to assist with. House Bill 996 relates to opioids and prevents further claims once we receive our 18-years' worth of settlement money. And then finally, House Bill 1102 provides $1 million for East Carolina University's telemedicine and digital healthcare access, which would be part of their Intersect East Development Project. So a lot going on in the General Assembly over the last two weeks, and we will continue to monitor them closely. Not to step on toes, Jordan Smith is your legislative liaison, and he and I will be working together to monitor those and bring back status reports and updates to you. So we will keep you advised. Also, Commissioner Ann Huggins had inquired as to the county's involvement on committees at NACO and the NCACC levels in terms of how we're monitoring both state and federal legislation. So just want to say that I encourage each of you to participate as your interest and schedule allows. Currently, from our Board of County Commissioners, I've surveyed, and Commissioner Perkins-Williams serves on eight different NACO committees. From staff, Deputy Manager Mike Taylor serves as Chair of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, North Carolina Property Tax Solution, that's NCPTS Oversight Committee. He also serves on the NACO National Association of Counties IT Advisory Committee, IT Standing Committee, and GIS, Geographical Information Systems Subcommittee. We do not have a standalone position in Pitt County government for government relations as other counties of our size or larger do have. We just work as a team to address our legislative matters as best as we can by providing information and monitoring. So if that's something the board would like to see in the future, we can certainly look into that. But in the meantime, all board members, senior leadership team are encouraged to participate in legislative matters as your interest on and budget allows. And so I wanted to get back to Commissioner Huggins and the full board on that report of our current involvement. And then we'll continue to keep you updated to the best of our ability on this short session action. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. If we can now move on to the tax collection report, Mr. Crum.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Tonight I bring you the April 2022 Tax Collection Report, the Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1, 2021 through April 30, 2022. The combined collection rate for real and personal property is 99.02%. The combined rate one year ago was 98.92%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes owed to the county by using the necessary remedies made available through the North Carolina General statutes. It's my recommendation for the board to approve the April 2022 Tax Collection Report as presented. Thank you.
Motion to approve. entertain such a motion. Commissioner McLaughlin?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved improperly second. If we could do it, please. Motion passes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. You have in front of you tonight the April 30 financial report for the General Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are at 10 months of the fiscal year. This represents 83.3% of our year. On the General Fund, we have collected 79.9% of our revenues while only spending 77.5% of our budget expenses. In Solid Waste, we have collected 94.54% of our revenues while only spending 80.64% of our expenses. And in the EMS Fund, we have collected 88.94% while spending 88.42%. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. Please put. Motion passes. Thank you. Now move on to the Human Relations Commission update.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give the board an update on Pitt County Human Relations Commission. It was established on January 11 of 2021, so about a year and a half ago. And it had remained inactive until the part-time community relations coordinator position was filled in September of 2021. Since that time, it was filled by Ms. Karina De Rocher. And her last day with Pitt County government was last week. So she moved on to a new career after she graduated with her master's degree at ECU and has relocated to Virginia. Before she left, I asked her to provide a transition report, which is contained in your packet. And that report includes kind of the history of the commission, a review of accomplishments over the last year, and her recommendations going forward. This is Ms. De Rocher's report that's been reviewed by Florida Hardy, Director of Human Resources, who also oversees and assists me in the supervision of Karina and the Human Relations Commission. But it was not formally adopted by the Human Relations Commission because at their last three meetings, they didn't have a quorum, in part because of size issues. So you'll see in the report that there were several accomplishments that occurred since September. Once Ms. De Rocher was onboarded in September of 2021, at their first meeting on September 30, Jean Troy, who was a program manager with the Civil Rights Division for the North Carolina Human Relations Commission, came to that meeting and provided some training to the new Human Relations Commission. Also at that first meeting, they elected their chair, Mr. Byung Lee, who was the Asian-American representative, Ivory Mueborn as vice chair, who was your town of Aiden representative, and Valerie Schueger, the City of Greenville representative, as secretary. Since then, they had regular meetings at 6:00 PM every third Tuesday of the month. And during the course of that time, they made different efforts to do outreach through education, communicate and engage with the community regarding the role of the Human Relations Commission. Then in December, they did some team building with Lee Guth. And later, early in this year, February 22, they had a planning session that was facilitated by Lee Guth for the Human Relations Commission. As a result of that planning session, your report contains some of their short and long-term goals that were developed through discussion of the board. And that's all in your packet. Ms. De Rocher, before she left, made some fairly bold recommendations about the future of the Human Relations Commission. And those recommendations are contained in your report as well and summarized in your packet. And she essentially recommends that the county ordinance creating the Human Relations Commission be reduced to the, reduced in size from 21 to 11 by removing the 10 municipality seats so that the board becomes more manageable and is better able to have a quorum. She recommends that the county advertise and fill her part-time community relations coordinator position. She recommends that the Human Relations Commission elect officers at their next meeting in June in accordance with their bylaws. She recommends the creation of two subcommittees, a community relations subcommittee and a community and celebrations subcommittee. And she recommends that the Human Relations Commission focus on the short and long-term goals that are contained in her transition report. So before you today is her summary, her recommendations. Mary Perkins-Williams is this board's representative on the Human Relations Commission. So she may have anything different or other to share about these recommendations. And I present that to you as an interim update report for this board to consider moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
I just have one question. And this is for the manager, and Ms. Perkins-Williams, you can answer this as well. But in reading the recommendations, it seemed to me that the recommendation to remove the municipal seats seemed underlying that was kind of an assumption that in those seats would be elected representatives of those municipalities. That was not my understanding when we discussed it. My understanding was that the intent was that, that there would be someone appointed from that community so that we ensured that we had, we had representation from all the different areas. areas of the county, not necessarily that it's the mayor of the Town of Aiden. Understandably, that if it's an elected representative, they serve on other boards, did not want to increase that burden. So that was my understanding. It seems that in reading this, again, I don't know if that's the case, but it seems like there might be some misunderstanding of intent. And I, so I would at least at least maybe get some light on what conversation's been held from the HRC on that point and whether or not maybe just tinkering that could be a less dramatic movement. Because I don't know about, I think one of the things that's great about having a county-wide HRC is that we are ensuring that we're not having the voices from one community predominate. I think voices in Aiden differ from those in Fountain, differ from those in Bethel, and it's important that we have representatives when we're dealing with human relations issues that we're dealing with, that we do have a cross-section of people from the county that can provide, you know, feedback. Not that they represent Bethel, so to speak, right? Not that they represent Farmville, so to speak, but they are from that community and are impacted by whatever problems that community has. And so that's a voice on the Board. So that's what I took from the recommendation, that there might be some, I don't know, but...
And I think you're right. I think it was interpreted and understood that it was a representative of that municipality, not from that geographic area within the community, which made appointments difficult and probably sustainability in that seat difficult as well.
Right.
So if those seats were to be retained, those municipality seats, I think it would go a long way for the municipality to provide a recommendation of just someone who lives within that community rather than an elected official.
That seems like easy.
Would you agree, Florida?
Okay. Very easy way to do it, it seems like.
So how would we do this if we wanted to advertise the relations coordinator position but maybe wait until that person is hired to make a final word on this and see if they don't agree with what we're talking about? We just go with B here? Is that appropriate for us to authorize this evening?
Yes, it would be. So what you're suggesting is that we move forward?
Yes, that we take recommendation B right now and go forward with it. And that's to advertise a community relations coordinator position. And I would say just that part of it, and when that person is in, maybe go with the rest of it. But it seems maybe premature for us to be moving on the other items here. I don't know.
I mean, but would we even need to move on A? I mean, I'm just speaking openly, but...
We don't at this point.
If that was our intent initially was to not bar it down to...
I'm not suggesting move on A. I'm just trying to suggest that we move on B and get the position advertised.
And I think that would be a potentially appropriate avenue.
I would make that motion.
Yeah. I have some comments. I agree that we should move on with advertising for the position as number one. I also would ask that we look at how the officers are elected. I want to ask County Manager, we have some boards that we appoint the Chair and the Vice Chair. Is that correct?
Yes, Board of Equalization and Review is an example where this Board, when making its appointments, designates who will serve as Chair.
Yeah. So I just want you to think about that maybe this Board would appoint the Chair to H. Just think about it. You know, while we are doing this, and I don't know if we want to think about it because the election's coming up in June, so would we want them to hold off on doing election until we have a coordinator? And then also look at this Board appointing a Chair, at least a Chair.
What Boards do we appoint? Chair.
The one that I can think of off the top of my head would be Board of Equalization and Review. This Board appoints all of its members, and then it designates who the Chair will be.
Is that the only one?
Help me if there are others.
That's the only one that I can think of.
Maybe speaking...
So we are not, we don't appoint the Chair of Boards, we appoint the Chair of a Board.
Correct.
Maybe speaking of box here, not to belabor this, but on that point, and this is a question for you, Madam Manager, if this Board obviously is not a planning board where there's no quasi judicial, this is really a, this is a social board. So would it be outside of the realm of appropriateness to have that Board? As, you know, we advertise and we hire that part-time person that's going to manage it, would it be inappropriate for our Board to say that who that person is acts as Chair?
That makes a lot of sense.
Because there you have input from that Board presumably. It wouldn't get into a position where our Board is, you know, dominating the voice, which kind of defeats the purpose of a Board.
So if I could comment on that, and that's interesting, and it's something also that Florida Hardy and I had talked about, and I think that has to do with and would be critical in recruiting for that position. Because I think there might have been some reliance on Ms. De Rocher, almost in a Chair-type role for that Board to help set their priorities and goals, but kind of an expectation that she was also more of an administrator. So it just wasn't very clear, and I think that created a disconnect in the Board's ability to move forward with a work plan. Because the Board was really looking to Ms. De Rocher, and Ms. De Rocher was looking to the Board for that direction. And so I think whichever way you go, clarity in that regard would be terrific, and you could certainly consider that as an option. And we would just need to know that prior to recruitment for this position so we can make that clear.
Can I adjust my motion to include that?
Sure.
That stipulation?
What you going to?
That we, I'm trying to move that we advertise a community relations coordinator position that we include in the job description, that that person would be Chair of the County Human Relations Commission.
I'll second that motion. It's amazing how I thought I was going to have some input, and you already motioned.
Actually, I was calling on Commissioner McLaughlin.
I mean, you know, I didn't have anything to say on a Board that I'm on, and it represents...
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Thank you.
I find it very...
I apologize, Mary.
I really find, I really find it very insulting that I served, and you say I was going to have some input, and I had nothing to say.
Mary, we hadn't voted yet. You can ask Chairman to speak.
We're still in the group comments, Mary.
I just like the fact that we were going to do the first motion that he said. I thought that was very appropriate. And then in hiring that person, you could discuss what you're talking about. Because the way the Board went, it was not, I didn't like how it was done, but at least hiring someone with a clarification of what that role would be is a better thing. And then maybe the people will show up. But I didn't want us to jumpstart the person getting here and changing things before they have an opportunity to look at what we have.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, my concern, Janice, and you might can help me on this, I heard you read in the report that it was a difficult meeting call with so many different people. Now, how, Janice and Mary, you could show me too, how could we deal with that? Because if we continue to have, and I think representation is very important from various municipalities, but to not have a quorum and trying to deal with issues of human relation, that is concerning as well. So my concern is have a functional human relation Board, but at the same time, we have to have a quorum to carry out. How would we do, and again, Mary, how can we eliminate that burden and have the Human Relations Committee continue to function?
I think your first step, and then I defer to Mary if she has anything to add, I think the first step is clarification that it doesn't have to be an elected official speaking as the voice of the municipality itself. That if you broaden it, as Commissioner Nunley had indicated, and say that it could be anybody from that community, then you might have a better chance of somebody not so burdened with other elected duties or activities to be able to attend. I think that would be a good way potentially to start. And then if you have a new community relations coordinator who's serving as Chair, who still can't get a quorum even with that modification, then I think that person can come back to the Board and ask for additional changes.
Well, since the Board has been functioning or meeting, we've had one of the municipalities to start their own Human Relations Council. And then I don't know how they went about getting the appointee, but the mayor came, and he never really showed up. But he was coming as the representative to the Board when the Chair of that committee is someone else. And, you know, I think the Chair of that committee would have been best to bring forward their concerns about human relations. So, I mean, there were some other issues that were concerning, but I'd like to see us get the position deal first.
I believe there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved in properly second. If we could vote, please.
And what we voting on?
The motion on the floor is to move forward with the hiring of a community relations coordinator who will also serve as Chair.
And my clicker is still yes, because I'm voting no.
You're voting no? Okay.
I just think you just need to be to hire another position and not give them another function in addition to that.
Passes six to three. Move on to the Manager's Report.
Yes, thank you. Moving forward in the Manager's Report, let me find my cheat sheet. Your next meeting dates are June 7. There's an error on this document. Your public hearing on the budget tomorrow evening is at 6 o'clock PM, not 7 o'clock PM. It's at 6 o'clock PM. It was noticed and advertised for your public hearing tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and we'll meet here in this room at 6:00 PM tomorrow morning, tomorrow evening, for your public hearing on the budget. The next regular meetings are at 6:00 PM on June 20 and July 18. Your next item, County Assembly Day, is June 14 from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon in Raleigh. I have signed up Commissioner Perkins Williams, Commissioner McLaughlin, and the County Attorney attending with me. I have a county van reserved. If anybody would like to travel together, just let me know. Item number three... Item number three is on the animal shelter, just to really say we did it. We are completing the renovations at the animal shelter, and we'll have a grand reopening and ribbon cutting on Monday, June 20 at 3:30 in the afternoon. So please plan to attend that event for refreshments and a tour of that facility. It has been a long time coming, but we are finally there. We have already addressed the proclamations earlier in the meeting. As your next item, as required by law, I wanted to report out a settlement on a legal matter with American Builders in the amount of $32,750. Your next item is a good news update. I wanted to let everyone know that the Sheriff's Patrol Division, who was formerly housed in leased space on Ninth Street, has moved into space on Stanton'sburg Road, and that move is complete. We're still working on fiber connectivity issues, but they are functioning in that space, and I have heard positive things about it. So I was pleased to report that we accomplished that. The next item has to do with operation of solid waste convenience sites. So of the 14 solid waste convenience sites that are spaced throughout the county, and John Demery is still here, okay, terrific, to chime in, five of them are operated by a company called Trust Denim. The principal there is Jeff Savage, and none of them are operated by a company called Management Support and Development Incorporated. The principal there is William Iverson McKenzie. Mr. McKenzie is retiring, and he has given us notice that he will not renew his contract for the upcoming year, and it will end on June 30. So I wanted to let you know that as a result of that retirement and termination of that contract, the County will have to issue a request for proposals for those services for the upcoming year, and that we have secured temporary help in the interim to cover those sites until a new contract is in place. So there had been, and so unless there's any objection, we'll move forward with that RFP. There had been some previous conversation, and I'm just going to go there by the Board, about the minimum rate of pay for the contract workers at the convenience sites. If the Board has continued interest in that, we can keep the rate the same in the current RFP, which is $8 an hour. If the Board would like to see that increased, we could increase it in the request for proposal up to $10 per hour. On the raw cost of labor itself would have about $100,000 impact on the cost to pay folks there. But if that is so the desire of the Board, we can certainly do that. So I will issue the RFP unless anyone on the Board directs any change.
Isn't that lower than minimum wage?
Yes.
So I guess this is a historical question. At what time did we bring in third-party contractors to provide service at the convenience sites? And the second part of that is, is there a way to up the minimum amount of pay that employees that are working for the County at these sites or similarly situated situations where we have a third-party vendor providing the service, presumably to keep costs down, but to make sure that the folks that are working for us are still making a wage that's livable?
So I can answer the second part of that question, and then I'll defer to John for the history. In terms of wages countywide for regular employees, if this Board adopts the proposed budget as it's proposed tomorrow evening, and with adjustments that can be made by July 1, all regular county employees, full and part-time, will be making at least $15 per hour across the Board. That does not apply to part-time employees without benefits, and it does not apply to our contractors. And we've been very careful in maintaining contractual relationships and allowing the independent contractor relationship to be independent for liability reasons and otherwise. Also, because often when we contract it out, it's so that we can get the most competitive rate, and when we step in and tell them how they're going to operate the business and what they're going to pay their employees, I think, and the intern can chime in, I think that blurs the independent contractor status, and it automatically drives up our price. If we wanted to staff it ourselves, we could staff it ourselves at probably a higher cost, but then we could assure exactly what we would be paying and the work that would be done. So with that, I'll turn it to John to say when we started contracting it out and why.
To answer your question real quickly, I'll be here 15 years, so about 14 years. When I first got here, the contracts, there were, I would say, eight or nine different contractors that covered the sites, and they were paid from the county's payroll. They were paid every two weeks. They were paid like county employees but didn't have benefits, and I questioned it because they technically weren't county employees. And so after we talked about it, the best thing we came up with was to bid it out. We bid it out some 14, that was like one of the biggest projects I did when I first got here, and I'll be here 15 years in January, so 14 years.
So ultimately, to reduce the total cost to the County because we were not providing benefits to those employees, would that be fair?
And every, for a number of years during budget time, I looked at the County taking it over, and then I said, I don't know. It would have cost us a whole lot more than what we were paying if the County were, because they're open 75 hours a week right now, and you're, to keep them not making overtime, you know, you got to keep them at 40 hours. Then they've got to have benefits, and the County, if we don't provide benefits, we have, and part-time, we have to keep them at 20 hours a week. So you're looking at, you know, three or four people per site. So I've looked at it to the County to operate them.
I just wanted to add one thing, too, to your question, as far as the service contracts that the County has. Just caution as far as, you know, what one service contract may entail, as far as you're thinking on this specific contract, may impact other contracts. So the manager mentioned $100,000 impact just to this contract alone. You know, think about that as far as the lawn service contract and other service contracts the County has, if we were to put some sort of clause or some sort of rate that we desired or required them to...
them to have, that it could have a ripple effect into other contracts that we do give, you know, bid out as far as for service.
So I just want to clarify, I'm not asking that we take action on this, but I do think it is important that we, that we act, we think about the people that are working as if they were county employees and being paid $8 an hour by their employer on our behalf. I think it's important that we consider it and that in future conversations that we take it seriously. Because I think that if we're paying our county employees $15 an hour, and we've got people doing a service for the county at $8 an hour, I think that begs the question, how much do we value that individual? You know, we can hide behind a third-party contract, but I think it still begs the question if we know what they're getting paid. And so I think it's a conversation that we need as a board and as a county need to start thinking about. Not to say that we think, act on it this budget cycle, but I would like us to have that kind of in our minds.
And we did do some calculations, if I may, Mr. Chair. At the $8 per hour, at 8:50 per hour annually, the raw labor cost would be $435,000 to cover those sites. At $10 an hour, which would be a significant jump from where they are, you're looking at $533,330, which would be about $97,000 more than that current raw labor cost. And then at $15 an hour, you're looking at $799,995 to staff it 12 hours a day, weekends, Saturdays, and five and a half hours on Sunday, which would be about a $364,000 increase in the raw cost of that labor. And of course, we can't control when there's a bid, what other costs above and beyond if it's a contractor intending to make some level of profit and cover overhead and insurance and liability. That certainly the raw cost of labor is just one component of that bid. So as a, as a team of staff, we have been looking very closely at the impact of how that would be, and then we're just really seeking the board's direction on how to bid that out. And given Mr. Mackenzie's retirement, I think it pushed it to an immediate decision on the next RFP, rather than giving us the easy way of allowing it to just renew for another year.
And some of the service contracts we have, too, it'd be difficult, I think, for a contractor to determine, you know, they may just come onto our site for a portion of the day. And so I don't know how you, as a contractor, I don't know how you, maybe one contract they have doesn't have that requirement, and you're paying them, you know, I don't know how that would work. It'd be, be difficult in some instances. So it may make them, it may make the, those contracts a little muddy as far as trying to figure that out, but it's definitely something that needs to be looked at.
So Tim, what you're recommending is to bid out the RFP as we've been doing in the past, right?
Yeah, yeah, we need to, yeah, we've hired, we've got temporary folks that are going to man it after the end of this month until we get a new, until we get a bid out and bring the contracts back to you for approval.
Well, I will.
I just got a question.
John, go ahead.
In the RFP, I've split it up. So we can have one, two, or maybe three different contractors to, like, right now we've got two.
We found that it's difficult for someone to manage all of them. It's difficult enough to have five and, or nine in this case. We've tried to keep tabs on some of the issues we've had with these contractors. We know it's difficult sometimes, but, you know, we feel it's best to bid it out, kind of as a, instead of a full menu, kind of à la carte, and then we can pick, if we decide that, you know, if someone necessarily is the low bidder on all three, it might not be the best fit for Pitt County, because then you've got all your eggs in one basket in a sense, and that might not be the best route for us to go. So it gives us some options once the bids are open, then we can figure out how we want to attack it.
Yeah, you know, Chris' concern is certainly legitimate, and I'm looking at it from a
county's perspective, Janice. I think that if we don't look at raising the minimum wage for those individuals, somehow it's going to reflect the county, I think, indirectly. So I don't know, what is, what is the basis of others' area, county, what are they doing? Do they have some?
They're different. Some of them have, some of the counties do it themselves. Some have contractors or a contractor. It's just, it's either or, but the thing with us is, we've got 14 of them, and a lot of some of the smaller counties don't have as many. Some of the other counties close on certain days. They're not open on Sunday, not asking to close on Sunday because we couldn't, but they're, they're a lot different. I see that we offer more of a service with our sites than any of the neighboring counties. Craven County, I know, closes a couple of days a week. Green County does the same, and I think Beaufort County does as well.
And further along those lines, the RFP does not have to specify a rate of pay at all. We can just do an RFP, and we can ask them to disclose their rate of pay, and the county doesn't have to go with the lowest bidder because this is a service. You can consider the rate of pay in determining which contractor to select if they disclose it. But I do think sometimes it's a slippery slope to dictate to the contractor the rate of pay in the RFP itself.
Maybe it's something that we can look at.
If the board is, if the board is okay with that, if there's consensus, we can go ahead and issue the RFP without a rate of pay included, but ask them to disclose the rate of pay for their workers.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
I want to know how you find people for $8 an hour. I can't find them for $18 an hour.
Do we need a motion and a vote, or just a consensus? No, just a consensus. Unless there's any objection, I'll move forward in that regard.
Yes.
And then I have two more very short things on my manager's report that are not on your agenda. I see the look from the chair. One is, would be your eighth item. Commissioner Huggins did ask for a report from the Health Director on our current numbers for COVID-19 vaccinations and any guidance on baby formula. I placed a report from the Health Director at all of your places this evening. So if you have any questions, you can review that information and then get back to me after the meeting or another time. And then finally, number nine, I wanted to let you know, consistent with our theme of valuing our employees and trying to provide additional flexibility and benefits, the Department of Social Services is offering a pilot program that begins Monday, June 13th, for the Income Maintenance and Child Support Divisions within Department of Social Services, offering a four-day work week. And this will last for 90 days, and the employees have the option of working a regular schedule of eight to five. Some will work, an A-team will work Monday through Thursday, others will work Tuesday through Friday, 10-hour days, and then they'll swap. So sometimes we'll have a Monday off and sometimes we'll have a Friday off. This will do a couple of things. It will provide flexibility for the employees who have been asking for more flexible work schedules in a four-day work week. It will also enhance the hours for customer service, because our folks will be able to get paperwork done in the earlier morning hours and potentially be open later to serve clients in the evening. And so Dr. Frazier is moving forward with this experiment, and in 90 days from now, he will let us know how it works, whether or not we need to modify it, or we can roll it out more broadly. And that's all that I have for my manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. At this time, entertain a motion.
Say move for acceptance of I have fucking seen.
Take it.
It's been moved in properly second. Good vote, please. Now move on to items for decision. Mr. Corley.
All right. This next item is one that we discussed briefly this evening. This is the contract for the renovations to the Register of Deeds office. We actually bid this out. JKF Architecture had done the plans for us, and we bid this project out, and the low bidder was Tideland Construction LLC, and their bid was $114,237.
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second.
Oh.
Come on, come on.
I keep, I've been pressing one five times.
It's okay. Commissioner, no.
One or two.
Mr. Rhodes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a long-awaited item, almost four years after Hurricane Florence hit us back in 2018. We now have funding that has been made available from FEMA that's been trickled down to the state. And thankfully, the big news item for tonight is that it does not necessarily trickle down to Brian and his staff, that we're going to talk more about a state-centric model for the administration of this grant. So good news again is about $2.5 million has been made available for the buyout, the acquisition of 16 flooded homes here in Pitt County. Of course, all this reverts to open space, and more than likely will include that in your lease program that you're familiar with dealing with quite often. So just to give you an idea of how these sites are scattered throughout the county, we do have a cluster down in Grifton. Grifton was hit hard by Hurricane Matthew as well as Hurricane Florence, so about half the units are in that area. Couple in Aiden, couple in Winterville, and then some north of the river along Old River Road. So that's the 16 total. Needless to say, this is a voluntary program. Not all 16 are interested at this late hour in pursuing this, but we'll continue to work with those families. So the state-centric model, in this case, I'm glad, after hearing the discussion about contracts, the county won't be responsible for contracting with appraisers, surveyors, demolition contractors, and so forth. The state will handle that, if they can find the contractors to do that. So that removes the financial and all the managerial responsibilities here at the county level. However, staff will be still involved with working with these 16 property owners, doing a lot of legwork, helping with some of the administrative work. And so therefore, you do have a budget amendment in your package tonight for some of the administrative work. About $126,000 is eligible for the county to receive for the work that we do. So we have two action items associated with this, given our county manager the approval authority for the memorandum of understanding with the state, and then also the budget amendment that goes along with this. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. At this time, entertain such a motion.
Motion to authorize county manager execute MOA and to approve the associated budget amendment as presented.
Second. It's been moved in properly second. We could vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners.
Good evening.
As the expansion of public infrastructure is a critical economic development asset that can improve our prospects for additional capital investment and jobs, we have an immediate opportunity to provide support for a wastewater expansion in northern Pitt County along Gum Road in Greenville that will support future investments and growth in the area, including the immediate and continued expansion for at least one existing industry. This expansion will serve any future customers that may need to utilize the surface in that area. The wastewater upgrades are estimated at $580,000, and there is pending support from North Carolina Department of Commerce, Greenville Utilities Commission, and the Greenville ENC Alliance totaling over $400,000. This leaves a gap in funding for the project, and the Pitt County Economic Development Department recommends and requests a Pitt County contribution of $100,000 from economic development funds to fund this wastewater infrastructure for economic development expansion.
I say move.
Second. It's been moved in properly second. We could vote, please. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnett.
Good evening again. I bring for you tonight a budget amendment as part of the Government Accounting Standards Board, better known as GASB. They issued a Statement 84 and a Statement 97. This is a statement, whereas when the county collects funds for municipalities, as you know, part of our tax office collects funds on, for our municipalities, we charge a slight fee, and then we remit all of that money to the municipalities. GASB 84 and 97, according to our auditors, is a requirement now for us to show that as part of our annual budget. So the budget minute tonight, we probably could have done this with consent, but with this number being as large as it is, $47,417,000 of municipal collected tax revenue, we do have to show that as coming into our budget and going right back out. So that's what this budget amendment tonight is for. This is clearly all municipal money. You will also see this tomorrow in the, as part of our presentation for our budget hearing. If we do it tonight, we should also do it next year for our upcoming budget. So we will have more discussions about showing that inflow coming in and going right back out. But tonight, I have the budget amendment for this fiscal year to make this move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. Everyone could vote. Thank you. Motion passes. If we could now move on to the reappointment of the Fire District Commission. Madam Manager.
Yes, it's being recommended that Carl Bryley, Mariana Bryley, and Henry Bond be reappointed to the Fire District Commission. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. Motion passes. And then now, if we could move on to the reappointment of the Social Services Board. Madam Manager.
It is being recommended by Dr. Augustine Frazier that Daron Dancy be reappointed to the Social Services Board.
Say move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Motion passes. If we could now move on to Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Ward.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to thank the manager for the legislative update, and I also want to say, when we go for Assembly Day, are we going to kind of talk about those bills that are pending or what?
Yes, we'll talk about those bills that are pending, and in addition, the agenda that were provided by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners on behalf of, that are favorable to all 100 counties.
Yeah, okay. I mean, we want to push ours in addition to that. And the other thing, the report from Dr. Silvernail, I would hope that this would be made public, because we do have constituents who want to know what our numbers are in Pitt County. So I want to make sure that this is passed on to the media.
Certainly can.
Okay. Those are my comments.
Mr. Breckler.
I'm curious, is if, with the reports and the testing on that Dr. Silvernail has submitted, if he's not testing, how do you know that this data is on point?
So I don't know that there's some assumption that he's not testing. This data is based upon the tests that have been done. I think there have always been, and I think Dr. Silvernail would say, and he can clarify, I'll make sure, that he would say there was always, the numbers have always underrepresented those that have not been actually tested. So if you project from an immunity perspective, how many people have had the actual virus who maybe never tested, or tested on their own with a home test and never went to a doctor, they wouldn't be counted in that number. And so you would increase the number of people who might have had a natural infection, which ultimately increases the immunity in your community, which is a good thing.
No comment. Commissioner White.
No comment.
Commissioner Nunnly.
Go Pirates. Excited to welcome Texas here for the superregional next weekend. They're going to love Pitt County, but hopefully not as much as, hopefully will like having them here a little bit more.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
I still say that we need to work on the trash.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner McLaughlin.
No comment.
Commissioner Coles.
Believe it or not, during the budget session, I listened to all three days, and Mike and Janice can attest that I forwarded comments or thoughts during that. But I'd like to drop a last-minute budget surprise for consideration tonight, so that it potentially could impact the budget tomorrow, and Janice could make some last-minute changes if the board were seated.
SROs.
How many school shootings do we need to see before we, as commissioners, finally decide to make sure that we fund, or that we provide funding for the balance of SROs that are needed? to make sure that we fund or that we provide funding for the balance of SROs that are needed? I believe it's about 12 positions that they need. I believe that that's going to cost about $1.2 to $1.5 million or something like that. It's about thereabouts. And so I'd like for this board to give direction to Janice, if you believe as much as I do, that we need to have at least one person at every school at all times that's there to protect our children. We have two in the high schools. We have one in several of the schools, but then the other schools are shared halftime. I don't know whether there's any schools with no SRO or not, but I know that there's at least halftime or part time. So I'm going to make a motion now, it's kind of improper during the commissioner's comments, but I'd like to make a motion that we give Janice the authority to change the budget to add $1.5 million to be made available to fund SRO positions. Now, I'm not saying give an additional $1.5 million to the schools. I'm just saying that we make it available so that we can go out and get enough SROs, or at least we, as county commissioners, are making an effort to make sure that every school has got at least somebody there for protection at all times.
Tom, if that happens, will the superintendent be obligated to do that, or wherever the money, or wherever this is going to, is it the sheriff or the superintendent?
I'm going to say no, but the superintendent, if the money was made available, certainly would be more apt to be able to do it if we make, but again, I'm not saying put it in their budget because I don't want to end up any unspent money into their fund balance. I'm saying make it available so that at least we can make an attempt to put an SRO unit, a person, in every school.
I second.
Did you want me to ask you? Yes, if I could address it.
Please do.
Yeah, so I have talked to Commissioner Coulson about this, and I've also had an opportunity to have some conversation with Brian Barnett, our finance officer, and Dr. Ethan Lenker, Superintendent of Schools. And he's the one, after really pressing, said that there would be 12 additional school resource officers that would be needed in order to have one at each school and two at the larger high schools, and exactly the way Tom explained it, and that the cost is about $100,000 per SRO. What I would like to do is not necessarily, and this is, I'll take the direction from the board, but I think you could accomplish Tom's intent by making the statement that if, so currently, they can't, there are vacancies within the existing SRO positions. So the sheriff's office has 10 SRO positions for the schools within the county, two are currently vacant. Greenville Police Department has SROs throughout the schools. They have one position vacant, I believe, right now, and some of the other smaller municipalities that were providing officers are doing their level best to keep those positions full. What I, I think Dr. Lenker would be very open to the idea of getting a school resource officer at every school on a reimbursement basis, as Tom has described, so that we're not providing that money upfront adding to the budget, because if he can't fill those positions, like Tom said, we don't want that to go ahead and fall back to fund balance or be used on something else that it was not intended for. I don't believe, though, that you, and you can if you want to, but I don't believe that you have to change your proposed budget now because you will have far in excess of $1.5 million available in your general fund, and Brian, say if I'm saying something wrong, that if during the course of the year, we made clear to Dr. Lenker that if you fill these positions, we will reimburse them, that once he's filled it and has incurred the cost, he can come to us, and we can do a budget amendment and get it paid. Otherwise, you're going to tie up those funds for that purpose, and they might not be used. So I think that accomplishes exactly what you're saying, but in a little different way.
Well, then, I would like to amend my motion to reflect exactly what you're saying.
Second.
Commissioner White.
So, no, I was just going to say, I mean, I'm all for each school having their own SROs. I know that some of our larger schools need two SROs. But just to clarify, right now, Pitt County Schools is needing 12 additional SROs to accomplish the goal of having one per school, and we, as a board, are agreeing to reimburse the school board every time they hire a new SRO. And so if they go out and they're able to hire 12 tomorrow, we are going to reimburse them for all 12, correct?
No.
Yeah, come next fiscal year, yes. And the other thing the schools are doing, too, is they're looking beyond traditional law enforcement, and they're looking at security companies to be able to fill that need as well. So if there's consensus among the board, I think you can accomplish that intent. I can have another conversation with Dr. Lenker, and he was very agreeable to doing it as a reimbursement, that as he goes out and fills a position, that he can verify that, show us the expense, and then we can bring it back to this board for reimbursement, knowing that this board intends to cover that cost.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to say, I think, I was still talking, I was going to say, I think Commissioner Coulson already had a second for his motion, but if he didn't, I will make a second.
Okay, I have a question before we vote. When you said the 12, but does that include the municipalities' SROs?
It does, yes. So those, and Brian, help me if I'm remembering right, Brian asked the particular question, of the 12 that you need, how many would typically come from the sheriff's office? And I should have brought that with me, do you recall?
I don't recall the number.
It was a number less than 12.
It's not 12.
Yeah, it was a number less than 12, and he said, well, let's start with the two that are vacant and fill those, and then we can continue to look from there because it's just difficult to find the law enforcement officers. Five?
Five, yeah.
Five.
Emma Hudson, their lawyer, her attorney, said five would come from the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. But I will add that Dr. Lenker, in another conversation last week, said that even though five would come from the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, of the remaining seven, when you get into the smaller municipalities, it's twice as difficult for them to hire somebody and pull somebody off their patrol to go work the school. So even though five would come from us, that number could go up if a small municipality had difficulty finding somebody. Somewhere between five and 12, but I would probably lean between five and 10, because I think two for sure, she did, well, she said four from Greenville, so between five and eight.
So can we have that conversation with the municipalities to ensure that we will have, or if they can't fund it or whatever, that we would reimburse?
Yes, so I would say that we would be reimbursed up to those 12 that are needed, is how I'm understanding the motion, so that if there are bodies available and Dr. Lenker can get them in and employed and working, that we don't want costs to be the prohibiting factor.
Right.
Right? So at this point, we're thrilled, and I think folks who work in the school system can attest that your corridors are all secure, that school security is in a very good place, but with 12 additional SROs, we don't want the county's cost to prevent that from moving forward. So that by that motion, we will not change the proposed budget, but we will bring back, when those expenses are incurred, a budget amendment, like you see all the time, for those costs to be paid.
Right.
So basically, this is us saying that we are going to financially support the schools being able to get their needed SROs, even if that, whether that's five positions or up to 12 positions, that we are going to financially support that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? I believe we have a motion and a second. If everyone could vote, please. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Then we have a short closed session.
At this time, let's move to the basis first.
I'll read the basis. Mr. Chair, it's been suggested that this body go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811a1, to prevent the disclosure of information that's confidential under 143, 31810, and secondly, to discuss an economic development method.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. If we could vote, please.
Okay.
Motion passes, and if everyone would like to take a brief recess. I'd like to welcome everybody back into open session. At this time, I'll entertain any motions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from April the 18th of this year.
Second it.
It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote, please. Motion passes. Any other motions for consideration?
Make a motion that we tender a, authorize the county manager to tender a donation in the amount of $100,000 to the ENC Alliance for economic development.
Budget amendment.
And include in that a budget amendment for that expenditure.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. If we could vote on that as well. Motion passes. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second.